Good evening, everybody. I now call the August 27th, 2024 meeting of the Wallingford Swathmore School Board to order. In opening, as you're willing and able, please rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance. Flag is over there.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, just as thought.
Thank you. Ms. Watauski Smith, would you please take attendance roll call?
Ms. Stole, here. Dr. Grounday.
Here.
Mr. Henry.
Here.
Ms. Holber. Mr. Miller.
Here.
Ms. Walkman.
Here.
Ms. Witsett.
Here.
Ms. Williams.
Here.
And Ms. Watauski Smith, here. We have eight of nine present.
Thank you very much. All right, moving on to superintendent's report, we're gonna do something slightly different this evening. We're going to introduce, I wanted to introduce both our new assistant superintendent and of course our acting superintendent. So first of all, let me please introduce our new assistant superintendent, Dr. Sharon Batic. She was born and raised in northeastern Pennsylvania. She has two children, son who graduated Penn State in 2017, employed as a business intelligence engineer in Atlanta, Georgia, and a daughter who's a junior at Penn State studying biomedical veterinary science. She's one of four sisters, one who's identical twin, so we don't know which ones here this evening. Two of her sisters are teachers, the third is a nurse. Dr. Batic is an animal lover and has two rescue pities, which is right up our alley here, who she loves. Dr. Batic earned her bachelor's degree, four master's degrees, and her doctorate in educational leadership from Pennsylvania Institutions of Higher Education, including Penn State and Immaculata University. Her employment experience in the field of education includes serving as a teacher, assistant principal, curriculum coordinator, division chief for special education and assistant superintendent. Dr. Batic has worked in rural, urban, and suburban school districts. Her hobbies include running, hiking, backpacking, mountain biking, and spending as much time as possible outdoors. She enjoys reading, traveling, and spending time with family and friends. And as we have already come to know, she's a very social person and generally enjoys spending time and learning the stories of others. And I've seen her all throughout our schools already, talking to people. So, Dr. Batic, if you would, please come up and say a few words and welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you, President Henry, for that introduction. I would just like to begin by expressing my gratitude to the entire WSSD community for welcoming me to this amazing district. You have made me feel supported and appreciated, and for that, I am grateful. I hope to return that same level of support and appreciation from each one of you and the members of the greater community. This past week has provided me with an opportunity to get acquainted with the district. I've had the pleasure of visiting all the buildings and campus classrooms. I especially enjoyed getting to meet so many of the teachers, support personnel, students of the district. And I very much look forward to continuing to get to know everyone on a more personal level. I'm not going to stand here and reiterate a summary of my entire resume. I think President Henry just did a pretty good job, and I have some things listed here, but I'm gonna skip over that. But I do want to mention that I did spend more than a decade of my career in the classroom, which has served me really well as an administrator. In addition, I served on various committees and I led multiple school transformation efforts. My experiences have allowed me to grow into the leader, into a leader who truly understands the various mechanisms that make a school district work, the most important of which is human capital. As you will come to learn, I am a proponent of servant leadership. As such, my mission is to serve and serve as a resource and a support to the various stakeholder groups throughout the school district. I'm eager to continue the work of maintaining the high level of excellence for which Wallingford Swathmore School District has come to be known, the very reason why I selected this district to resume my employment in Pennsylvania. I am excited about working with Dr. Scanlon and the board of directors, as well as the central office team in partnership with the school community to set priorities and align that aligned to the strategic plan. The sense of pride in this community is truly palpable, and I feel very blessed to be a part of that. Again, I thank you all for the very warm welcome that was extended to me this week. I appreciate it deeply, and I can't wait to get to know all of you better, so thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Batic, and welcome. Now, I'd like to welcome Dr. Jim Scanlon, who's sitting next to me, and is joining us as our acting superintendent, will help us through our leadership transition. Dr. Scanlon retired in 2021 after serving as superintendent of the Westchester Area School District for 12 years. Prior to that, Dr. Scanlon was a superintendent in Delaware and Quakertown. Over his storied career, and I added that word in there, storied, Dr. Scanlon worked as a principal, curriculum director, assistant superintendent, and superintendent. Since retiring, he's had the opportunity to support several school districts as interim superintendent and interim high school principal through times of transition. Dr. Scanlon earned his bachelor's degree at the University of Pittsburgh and his master's and doctoral degrees at Temple University. Most importantly, Jim and his family have fostered over 40 dogs and currently have two dogs, Gus and Tilly. And do not ask me how I found that out, because I will not reveal my sources. But, Dr. Scanlon, welcome. We're thrilled to have you here. Thank you for your, the couple days you've already been working hard, and please take it away if you like.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Henry, and it is indeed my honor to be part of the Wallingford Swathmore School District during this time of transition. As Mr. Henry said, my background includes 22 years as a superintendent and eight years in the classroom as a teacher. I too try to remember my roots, where I began, and how I got started in education. For my first two years in college at the University of Pittsburgh, I was an economics major, and it was the work that I did through a volunteer program at a YMCA, working with special needs children. Today, we would call them life skills kids, ages 12 to 21, where I thought they were doing some embarrassing things to get them some exercise. So, I asked our director if we could recreate that program and do a swimming program with kids to get them some cardio. With my junior year, then I went and enrolled in the School of Education and never went back. So, I tell you that story because as you volunteer, your service is out there, and I'm a big believer in giving back, that you never know what, how it's gonna change your life, and for me, it was. So, I have a special heart, a special place in my heart for special needs children. I just finished my second day here. It's been busy. And I had a chance to visit, I actually got to all five schools, and we welcomed back, you know, more than 3,700 students. In fact, 3,0736 is our official enrollment to start the year, and that's just about where we finished last year. The high school has about 1187, and that's just about 13 fewer than last year, so they're right about the same size. Middle school, 880, that's about a 15 student difference, and at the elementary schools, 1662, which is only a difference of five kids from last year. So, we're right about, we're, you know, kind of flat enrollment from last year to this year. Buses were out there running on time, for the most part, despite the ongoing sidewalk construction at the high school and middle school. I was coming back from SRS Elementary School and took me back and came toward the high, I was trying to get to the middle school complex where the parking lot was for the district office, ended up on the high school side and had to take a 15-minute detour. I could see the school, I needed a 15-minute detour to get to that parking lot, so that's somewhat frustrating. I have two children, a 15-year-old and a 13-year-old, so I also look at making decisions through the lens of a parent. And for those of you that have teenagers, you know that this has been a really rough week, getting them up and getting them on the school bus on time, so I feel your pain. Throughout the opening and the last two days, I know that this summer, our secretaries, administration, and our maintenance staff all did a great job preparing for the start of school. The buildings look great, supplies are all in there, teachers were eager and anxious to get their students actively engaged in learning, and I saw an awful lot of that the last two days. I had a chance to stop in and see cafeteria duty at Wallingford Elementary School. It's been several years since I had to do that, but that was really well organized. And I actually stopped at SRS School out on the playground to see playground duty. The kids were doing much better with the heat than the teachers out there yesterday, so. But it was a great, great opportunity to talk with some students and talk with some staff in a very unstructured, unstructured time. I would tell you that the staff with whom I spoke with were very upbeat, and they were very welcoming, and I thank everybody for that. Overall, I thought it was an excellent start to the school year. The next few weeks, I'm gonna dedicate time to getting to know as many peoples as possible in the school district, scheduling times with each building principal to visit the schools for longer periods of time. I'm also setting up individual meetings with central office administrators to find out what their priorities are. Like to set up meetings with individual board members and working to get that done. Also like to set up meetings with the leadership teams or respective associations so that I can get to know everybody as soon as possible. There, this has been an extremely quick transition, and typically when there's a superintendent change, there's more ramp-up time than 48 hours. And my role as interim superintendent is not here to make sweeping changes. Is my time up?
I was on the clock.
Rules, rules. And it's not here to add more to anybody's plate. I understand how busy everybody is. I'm here to provide some stability and encouragement and perhaps maybe offer some ways to work smarter and maybe not as hard as everybody's working, if we're a little smarter. I wanna try to identify priorities that we need to continue. Give an example of that today. Dr. Mazkowski and I stopped into a reading specialist meeting, hidden away in the basement of a special room where they were meeting, to see how they were doing with Ames Web Training, which is a new assessment tool being used to identify progress for students. Reading specialists are working to help identify those skills to help teachers, help children. So, that's a new piece that's underway. We wanna make sure we continue with that. That's just one example. So, if there are those priorities, I wanna make sure that we continue with those as well. Most importantly, I wanna make sure and ensure that we're enjoying the work of educating students. It's amazing, it's really amazing to watch the growth of these young people as we move through the school year, and I don't believe there is a profession that's more important than teaching kids in the classroom. I also recognize that this year has begun without a collective bargaining agreement with the Teachers Association, and I understand that the board and administration are working collaboratively to finish that very important work, and that's an important piece, too. Thanks for all the effort that everyone's put into the beginning of this school year. You're making a difference in the lives of young people. I wish everyone a great end to the first week of school and a very enjoyable and restful Labor Day weekend.
Thank you, Dr. Scanlon. Thank you, sir. All right, now moving on, our agenda, next is board announcements. The board did meet an executive session prior this board meeting. Moving on to... Nope, it's moving on to audience recognition. Moving on to audience recognition and response for items for action on the agenda. So, this is the time on the agenda where it's an opportunity for public to comment for items that are on the agenda. We will have time later in the agenda for comments on items not on the agenda. As a reminder, public comment is a time for district residents and taxpayers to speak to the board about an issue that is before the board, or may become before the board, is a time for us to listen and hear perspectives and experiences from our community. While we don't answer questions and we don't have a Q and A here, there's certainly an opportunity for follow-up after the meeting if there's a specific question for the district, and Dr. Scanlon was very generous with his time afterwards in our last meeting as well, to answer questions and talk to people. Because we want, there's a lot of people here, we wanna give as many people as possible a chance to be heard. We will stick to our three-minute time limit, and we'll give you a heads up when you're about one minute to go, so you can wrap up your thoughts. Once we hit the three-minute time limit, I ask that you try to finish your final sentence, because we can move on to the next speaker. So, having said that, is there anyone here who would like to speak tonight about a topic on the agenda this evening? And as a reminder, when you go up to the podium, please state your full name and the name of the street on which you live in the district. So, is there anyone who would like to speak on items on the agenda? Yes, sir. Please.
Hey, my name is Bill Foster. I live on Strat Haven in Swathmore, Borough. This is a really silly question. So, a lot of times in school boards, when there's an executive session, I'll say what the category of item was, whether it was personnel or litigation, et cetera. And I wasn't sure whether that was a state requirement or not, but if you're able to say the category of activity in your executive session that just happened, it would be welcome. Thanks.
I wasn't actually paying attention during the announcement, so I'm not really sure what was said or what was not said. I will say it was a student-related matter, and it was a frankly a negotiation matter.
All right, thank you. Anybody else would like to comment on items on the agenda? And just as a reminder, we will have time afterwards for items not on the agenda, so. No? Okay, all righty. Moving on to minutes. Our next item for action on the agenda is approval of the minutes for the June 17th regular... I'm sorry. Please. Yep, yes, ma'am. Please.
Thank you. I'm actually gonna take this off of here so that my back is not to you. Okay, my name is Mandy Jubilee Cameron Drive in Wallingford. Good evening. My ask of you, the school board and newly appointed administrators, is three things. First, perform a patent literacy audit with patent experts across all three elementary schools. Second, create a literacy committee comprised of community members, school board members, elementary principals, and district administrators that honor teacher voice in order to be transparent with current literacy initiatives and timeframes that will be shared with the larger WSSD community. And third, give our awe-inspiring teachers a worthy and respectable contract during... I'm gonna let him applause as long, because it's well deserved, but just don't take that away from my time. During the July 22nd, 2024 school board meeting, members of this school board and the former superintendent blamed the current district challenges on the district's initiatives being set to a sprinter's pace timeframe. My mouth dropped. There has been nothing sprinter-like about your actions around the failing literacy programs and initiatives in our elementary schools. In fact, I have spent 290 days since myself and over 60 community members implored you to take action away from balanced literacy. Despite our emails, school board meeting speeches, calls, et cetera, balanced literacy is still alive and prevalent in K-5 classrooms in our district. If anyone says otherwise, please question them. Please ask them for evidence. Please ask them why there are five different literacy programs being implemented in K-2. I work with school districts and school leaders and teachers every single day across Pennsylvania that are successfully shifting away from balanced literacy to a structured literacy approach. They are doing it quickly and carefully, with urgency and consideration for all students and teachers. This need not be a long, drawn-out process. We only have three elementary schools. The school district of Philadelphia is making the shift for all K-5 classrooms with over 150 elementary schools within one school year. We can't even get it figured out for K-2 in one school year. I plead with the community to ask why the school board and district administrators are voting this evening on wasting more of our taxpayer money, in fact, $159,000 worth, by implementing 95% group core phonics program in grades 3, 5 that only addresses those students on grade-level phonics skills. To be clear, I don't have issue with this program, but really how it will be implemented within our schools. It does not address students that are above or below grade level. We should be outraged as community members that this snail's pace has only gotten us this far. If you approve this item on the agenda tonight, it will mean that teachers are being given materials which only addresses grade-level material in a whole group setting, not the above or below grade level, which is only creating more and more gaps in their...
Ma'am, you are now beyond your time.
...with teacher professional learning and more wasted money. Please, thank you.
Bridget Need, Harvard Avenue, Swathmore. Before I begin my statement, I would like to voice support for our teachers and for my fellow community members who are here advocating for the cell phone ban. I stand up for you today to emphasize again the critical importance of fully adopting the science of reading in our district. We continue to observe the persistent challenges our students face in literacy, despite efforts and intentions, despite having the very best teachers in the area. We see it anecdotally in our own homes. We see it anecdotally in our own homes and we see it and reflected in the district wide data. The harsh reality is our current approach is failing too many of our students. The science of reading offers a well researched, evidence based methodology that can profoundly transform their learning outcomes. It is not just a set of instructional strategies. It is a comprehensive research based understanding of how reading is best taught and learned. It integrates cognitive science, linguistics, and educational psychology to address the complexities of reading development. By embracing this approach, we can provide our students with the tools they need to become proficient readers and consequentially like successful lifelong learners. Dragging our feet on implementing these evidence based practices is a disservice. Stating on the website that WSSD uses the science of reading is very different from implementing it in a literacy block. As of today, teachers in grades three to five do not have science of reading aligned materials in their classroom. Every day we delay, more students are left behind. They struggle with reading difficulties that impact their academic performance and self esteem, perpetuating a cycle of disadvantage that can affect their entire educational journey. We talk about the importance of mental health, but make only surface level efforts to help our students. Do you know how many smart students in our district feel bad about their own learning because of how far behind they are in literacy? The science of reading has the potential to close these gaps and ensure every student has the opportunity to succeed and feel confident about their learning. WSSD's commitment to excellence demands we act decisively. We owe it to our students and our teachers.
One minute.
To adopt the best practices available and to ensure these strategies are grounded in proven research. The science of reading is not a fleeting trend, but a rigorous scientifically validated approach that has already shown significant school uh success in schools across the nation. Most of you sitting on that stage have advanced degrees. You understand research, you understand data. Dr. Vatic, you come to us with an expertise in curriculum development and instructional leadership. Dr. Scanlon, I appreciate your focus on working smarter and I'm eager to see that come to fruition. Let us not continue to be a barrier to our students' success. It is time to move beyond hesitation and rhetoric and make real tangible change. Thank you.
Okay, before we move on, is anybody else have uh comments uh for items that are on the agenda this evening? Okay, so now moving on to the minutes. The next item for action on the agenda tonight is approval of the minutes for the June twenty seventh regular meeting, board meeting, the July twenty second, twenty twenty four special board meeting. And the August twenty second regular board meeting. Do I have a motion for approval?
Someone.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, any discussion about the minutes for those three meetings? Seeing none, uh, Ms. Witaskey Smith, would you please take a roll call?
Ms. Dole, aye. Dr. Grande. Mr. Miller.
Aye.
Mrs. Walkman.
Aye.
Ms. Witsett.
Aye.
Ms. Williams.
Aye.
Ms. Wackowski Smith, aye. Mr. Henry.
Aye.
Uh, it passes, the motion passes eight, ten, nothing.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to committee reports. Uh, I'll start with uh. Educational affairs and Ms. Witaskey Smith, um, do you have a re- an educational affairs committee report?
Uh, educational affairs did not meet this month. Our first meeting will be uh September fourth. And just a reminder that we are now starting at six P M. So please come, uh, we'd love to hear from you. And again, it'll be September fourth at six P M. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, facilities and finance, uh, Dr. Grandin, you have a report for us. Thank you. Uh, moving on to policy and Mrs. Walkman.
Uh, so our first meeting for this school year is on September eleventh. I know that there um, it sounds like there's folks in the um, in the audience today that are um, interested in our electronic device policy. Um, and potential changes to that policy. I. So I I did, we have heard from um, a number of people have reached out to us uh about concerns about the current policy. And so I did want to make sure that folks know it is on the agenda. Discussion about the policy will be on the agenda um for September eleventh. Um, with the intention um not of bringing a policy back to the table that's already been marked up, but rather to hear um uh comments from the community. Uh, so that we can take that back and um reconsider what's on the table uh already in the current policy. So I just wanted to let you know it is on the agenda uh for September eleven.
Thank you. Uh, the wellness advisory committee, uh, Mrs. Dole or Dr. Grandin, do you have a?
We have not met.
Have not met. Okay, thank you. Uh, Pennsylvania School Board Association, Ms. Witaskey Smith.
Right, this summer, uh, Pennsylvania School Boards Association did uh release some information. And they do want to remind families that beginning in twenty twenty six, all P S S A's will be given in a digital format only. So this trend is a trend seen in standardized testing across the nation. Um, so our students need to be prepared. Uh, Pennsylvania is uh still addressing teacher shortages. And what they're doing is eliminating some basic skills tests so that uh you don't have to pass those to enter teacher preparation program. But you still will need to test to uh exit the program. Uh, ex- expanding uh student teacher support grant program and allowing non citizens to be certified as teachers. Pennsylvania has created the solar for school grant program to expand the use of solar energy at public school. And the following competitive grants are available to schools for the twenty four, twenty five school year. Uh, if there is a school safety and mental health grant, school facilities grant, including grant for solar energy. And a grant for feminine hygiene products. Just to note, though, that uh Plan Con, which was a grant program for school construction, has been delayed for another year. Uh, I will continue to serve as your P S B A li- uh liaison uh to the state association. That is all.
Thank you very much. All right, moving now on to uh the Delaware County Community College Liaison, Ms. Witsett, do you have a report for us?
Um, it's on the agenda under other, it's the signing of the budget resolution for Delaware County Community College. For the two thousand twenty three, twenty four school year.
All right, thank you. Yeah, we'll we'll get to that when we get to the end of the agenda. Thank you. Uh, the next uh committee is the Delaware County Intermediate Union, that's Mrs. Holbert. She's uh unable to join us this evening. Um, I don't think they met anyway. Uh, the next one is the Delaware County School Board Legislative Council, and that's Mrs. Walkman.
Um, there is no report for this evening.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on to uh personnel. We have fifteen items for action in personnel. Uh, before I go down the list of those actions, are there any items on the list that anyone on the board would like to separate from the rest under personnel? Okay, seeing none. Uh, we have resignations and retirements as listed, appointments as listed. Leaves of absence as enlisted. Changes of position as listed. Changes of salary status, confidential settle settlement agreement. Activities advisor appointments, activities supplementals, twenty twenty four summer school transportation. Twenty twenty four, twenty five, twenty five conference requests, twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five mentors appointments. Uh, twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five fall athletic supplementals, twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five curricular supplementals. Uh, a sweet Stevens, Katz and Williams agreement. And teachers eligible eligible for tenure. Those are vital voting items. There is one on there for payments for unused sick days. That is just for information only. Uh, so do I have a motion to approve items A through O?
So moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Walkman. Um, any discussion on those items under personnel A through O?
I would just like to congratulate all of the teachers who are receiving tenure tonight because as a teacher myself, I know whatever leave that is. So congratulations to all of you if you're in the.
Yes, thank you. Uh, I'll second that for sure. And thank you, Mrs. Williams, for bringing that up. Uh, congratulations to those teachers. Um, any other further discussion on items and personnel?
Um.
Ms. Witsett?
Ken, um. We have a, uh, uh, what exactly are the? I I know that it was discussed in meetings, but just for the public. Um, the curriculum supplementals for two thousand twenty four, twenty five, what exactly are we approving?
You have it all? Yeah.
Yeah, I got it. Thank you.
Yeah, Ms. Witsett, these are uh supplemental uh contracts. So these are department chair, team leader positions, uh, grade chair, chairperson positions. These are part of the collective bargaining agreement and they are supple- annual supplementals that are approved annually uh for extra duties that that teachers are doing in the schools.
Thank you, Dr. Scanlon. Uh, any further discussion on those items and personnel? Okay, seeing none. Ms. Witaskey Smith, would you please take a roll call vote?
Ms. Dole.
Aye.
Dr. Grande.
Aye.
Mr. Miller.
Aye.
Ms. Walkman.
Aye.
Ms. Aye.
Ms. Witsett.
Aye.
Ms. Williams.
Aye.
Ms. Wackowski Smith, aye. Mr. Henry.
Aye.
It passes eight to nothing.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to curriculum. We have eleven items for action in curriculum. Are there any items on the list that anyone on the board would like to separate from the rest? Okay, seeing none. Uh, under under curriculum, we have a number of contracts. One is with, it's no red ink digital. Framery, six soundproof learning pods, Noel chairs, Geo classroom libraries. Foundations, readers. Ninety five group, Sunday systems, Brain Pop. Tyrell Tech, Delta Math. And then Edmund, whoa, Edmund, um, I just totally mispronounced that. You know what I'm trying to say. Um, do I have a motion to approve items A through K under curriculum?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. I have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Uh, any discussion on items? A through K under curriculum? Mr. Miller, please.
Just really quickly for folks in the audience looking at the different contracts, can we pull out what renewal means, what Esser grant means, et cetera?
Yeah, thank you, uh, Mr. Miller. So what we've tried to do to make it easier to understand, many contracts we have in the part of the school district are ones we renew every year for for services that we're using. So in the in the contract, we tried to mark them as renewal so that people know these are, those are, these are um. Ones, standard contracts that we renew. Esser grant, you'll see that, you'll see the word Esser next to some of the contracts. They are a grant from the federal government that we were uh granted. And so that money's, that's not money that we're using out of our budget. That is using the Esser grant funds to pay for those contracts. And then the other ones that don't have either Esser or renewal next to them are are uh new. Does that, is that good enough? Is that good? Gotcha. Okay, and Esser, correct me if I'm wrong, I think this is the last year for it. It was related to COVID bonds, yeah?
Yeah, E- Esser funds were were part of uh COVID related funds from the federal government that were that were sent down and s- and uh some of that money had to be used for uh remediation and help. For the some of the learning gaps that occurred during uh during the pandemic. So these are some of the programs that we've been using to help address those. Those are paid for by federal funds.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Ms. Walkman, please.
So I I wanted to just share my perspective on the um, the reading curriculum um items that are here on for grades three to five. Uh, so. I, I'm not a, I'm not a educator. Um, I've had to do my own research to understand um both the the elements of the curriculum. Um, all of the many, many articles that are out there about science of reading and have read many of those. Um, what I've come to understand from that is that the science of reading is not per se its own curriculum. One does not buy a curriculum yet, maybe someday you will, but today we don't buy a curriculum that says here is the science of reading curriculum. But rather it is a philosophy um about how uh how we learn to read. And then how do we support that based on newer science um uh about how how the brain works and how one learns? Um, and so while I've heard and continue to hear the feedback and the concerns about the approach that we're taking. I do know that that approach has been in consultation with teachers who were part of helping us um pilot and test. The material that is on the agenda for approval. Um, I understand that that rollout schedule is one that is also uh being established in consultation with our teachers. Uh, and I therefore feel quite comfortable that what we are um, the way that we're moving forward is the right way to move forward. I have also spoken with teachers in other districts who have told me that this is very consistent with their approach and what they're doing as well. Um, so I will be voting in favor of these items this evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Walkman. Any further discussion on items under curriculum? Ms. Dole, please.
Yeah, so I I know that we've discussed this in committee um at length. However, regarding ninety five percent group, there was a point raised uh by a community member tonight that I'm hoping maybe somebody can clarify, Dr. Mosikowski possibly. Um, if you're willing to to do that um regarding use of grade level materials only. I'm not sure what that is exactly referring to. Um, I, would you be able to speak to that or can someone else speak to that or?
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for letting me speak about the literacy curriculum. So the ninety five percent group has been identified to supplement. What we currently have in grade three to five, and it is going to be part of core. We also are purchasing Sunday, which is going to be part of the intervention program. Ninety five percent group will also allow teachers to differentiate in the classroom. So yes, it is part of core. And any program that is part of core is for tier one. But we also have a system placed in every single one of our elementary school that allows for differentiation and for teachers to do small group. And to, we have an OTI system where we identify interventions where teachers meet students' needs. And I would like to add that in addition to this, we have been working on K two uh literacy curriculum for the last. Four years in addition to grades three to five. And this year we are committed to exploring what would become our core literacy curriculum in grade three to five. So we have a continuum from grade scale through five. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Mosikowski. Any further discussion on items on cor- under curriculum? Okay, do I have a motion to approve items A through, we did that already. I know, just double checking. Of course we did. I got it. Um. So if there's no further discussion, uh, Ms. Mrs. Witaskey Smith, would you please take a roll call vote?
Ms. Dole.
Aye.
Dr. Grande. Mr. Miller.
Aye.
Ms. Walkman.
Aye.
Ms. Witsett.
Aye.
Ms. Williams.
Aye.
Ms. Wackowski Smith, aye. Mr. Henry.
Aye.
Motion passes eight to nothing.
Thank you very much. Now, moving on to student services, we have twelve items for approval in student services. Are there any items uh under student services that anyone on the board would like to remove for just just discussion?
Uh, can I request that item K E X Q be separated?
Item. Sorry, which ones? K?
K.
Just item K?
Yes.
Okay, yep, can can do. Okay, any other uh items that anyone on the board like to remove for discussion? Okay, seeing none. All items in this section are attached and described as the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve items? A through L with the exception of item K that we will discuss separately. Thank you, Dr. Grandin. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Discussion on items A through L. Well, actually. How should we do item? Should we discuss item K first or do that secondly? Which appropriate?
You already have a motion and second for every item except for K.
We do do that first.
Do everything else first.
And then we're gonna, then I'm gonna move for item K and discuss that, right? Correct? Got it. Okay. Any discussion on items A through L except for items K? And I'll, I shall read down there through them for student services. Um. I'm sure I don't miss anything. Services, there you go. Uh, we have as attached educational service agreements, twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five panorama renewal. Twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five Lakeside, new. Twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five G H R renewal, twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five C C I U renewal. Twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five Brett Denovey Associates renewal. Twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five P T S renewal, twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five Criticare renewal. Twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five Holcomb renewal. Twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five Aaron Orange, new. Skip K. Twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five Aviana renewal. Uh, discussion on items A through L with the exception of item K. Any discussion? Ms. Walkman, please.
Um, I I for, just for informational purposes, I know that we sometimes work with the IUs and contract with the IUs for different services and folks from time to time have asked, you know, why do we do that? One of the reasons that school districts use the IUs, the IUs will specialize in certain services that they offer to school districts. And by working through the IUs, you can often get a much more advantageous cost proposal because they're doing that program across multiple school districts and making it available. So both an opportunity to drive the expertise that exists within the intermediate units at a lower cost to the taxpayers. And in addition, it it has been noted that we, there are a number of different things that we contract out for. And there's different reasons why, outside of an IU, why one might contract with some of these different agencies. And generally speaking, a lot of these are, well, it's in student services, right? So it's for different specialty services provided to students that can be, I'm looking at, I want to call you Ian, so I'm sorry. Dr. Sandberg, that is his name, Dr. Sandberg and and Dr. McCullough. In in some instances, it's special services that would be very challenging to try to hire. It's very difficult to find some of these services. And then there's organizations that provide expertise in that. That's primarily a reason why we would go outside versus in-house. There are sometimes some other cost advantages as well in those same, same thing, like I said, for the for the IUs. But I just wanted to share, because I know folks have asked that question from time to time, why one, as why as a district, we might look outside for those services rather than just in-house?
Thank you, Mrs. Walkman. That's, that, yeah, it's helpful. Any other further discussion on items A through L except for item K?
Actually, that's a good segue for what I wanted to say specifically regarding those renewals for the behavioral health services. Can we maybe hear just a little bit about Dr. Dr. Sandberg and or Dr. McCullough about the the protocols that are in place for evaluating the quality of the services that the agencies provide and then the process for handling concerns should they arise?
Good evening. I I I think when we last spoke, Ms. Dolee, when we last spoke, we were specifically addressing concerns around the one company BDA. Certainly, it is our largest staffing agency that sorts, offers specialized services to the team that Ms. Walkman was was speaking. By and large, in terms of that that company that's got for Brett Danovi and Associates, the biggest concern that the district has had traditionally has been around attendance. It's not to say that there have not been concerns around quality. So I I think I'm gonna try to answer your question around those two issues. Certainly with any contractor as well, one benefit the district, quite frankly, is that we can terminate those people if they are not meeting our our the needs of our students pretty conveniently. That being said, there's a shortage of qualified personnel across almost all domains in education, as we've noted several times, BDA, as well as its other agencies, but BDA in particular, they have not been immune to those supply-side shortages, coupled with the fact that our district and other districts have an increased demand in terms of ADA practitioners of high behavior analysis. So you know, notwithstanding some of those benefits to having a contracted agency, we we certainly are are sometimes occasionally in this position where when we have an imperfect employee assigned to a student and they're maybe not meeting our attendance requirements, the prospect of having no person for a student when that service is guaranteed through a student's IEP is is less than ideal. What I'd like to say is to your to your question, this year we have some some certainly new initiatives that we certainly think will make a large difference. We meet monthly with liaison from those companies to talk about the quality and attendance of all personnel. We have new data protocols so we can look from from one year to the next in terms of what, you know, what are the days that that individual people are out? We have also restructured the direct oversight. So now every PCA assigned to a student by way of an IEP, I'm sorry, I apologize for the excessive acronyms here. Every person, by and large, the majority of their day, if not the totality of their day, they receive direct oversight from a board certified behavior analyst. So that's sort of a new restructuring in our buildings. We also have hired, we've created a cost neutral proposal so that there's actually a building sub. You know, it provided that there is one person who is out today, that sub will will sort of take that position. And because we are not billed for that outage, it it's sort of cost neutral, which which is a good thing. And then we also have a contingency plan that we're we're putting in these first two weeks where when principals here in the morning, these two people might be out. This is the priority. This is a student whose needs are are the most significant. So this is where this individual should go in the event that we're not able to fill all those vacancies. So I I do think we have something, probably not mentioning them all, that that really will help to improve. I I think in terms of the sort of supply side piece, we are in better, we're in a far better position this year at this time than we were even last year. So I hope that answered your question.
Sure. So if there is a concern, then it would be handled via one of those, either the person supervising on site or the meetings with HR that occur monthly, that's sort of how that would flesh out. Is that right?
If if there is a, I mean, it depends who has the concern. If there is a parent who has a concern, they should absolutely reach out to their principal, to supervisor of special education, myself, probably the the case manager. It's not that I say that the last, that's probably what I meant to say the first, I'm sorry. That would probably be the first point of contact. If there is a building-based concern, as with anything, go first to the principal and then the principal will elevate it as need be.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Dr. Sandberg.
Actually, I had one more
Please, Mrs. Williams.
clarifying point, just regarding the Lakeside contract, which was item C. So I just wanted to, there are a lot of contracts this month to go through, and I know this was mentioned at Facilities and Finance, but just to kind of connect the dots for the community, it was helpful for me to go back and note that this is for direct behavioral health services at West, that is individual and group counseling. Am I correct in saying that?
That is correct.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Is there another question around that?
No, thank you.
While you're up there. With so many renewals and what what is the, why are we adding new services, billable services?
So sometimes it's to replace contractors that are no longer with us. In this particular instance, this was a position that has been identified as a need in order to be to be comparable to our other elementary schools that do have a one-point O behavioral health counselor where the where Wes only had a point five. And Wes has the emotional support program. And so that was the only counselor, the behavioral health person that was there was the was for the emotional support program. So it was approved actually last year to get this position. And because of staffing shortages, we were unable to attract a candidate. And because we were able to this year, we see it on the agenda now.
So this is a contractual?
It is. It's it's a contract for direct individual and group counseling for students at West so that the point five behavioral health counselor then focuses only on our emotional support program.
Is that just for this year or will it go into two?
So the contract is for this year. It expires at the end of the year. We would need to renew it moving forward. It is my intention to renew it moving forward, given the data that we have around behavioral health needs.
Okay.
Thank you, Dr. McCullough. Any further discussion on student services?
Just the
Ms. Dolee?
But the item that was separating.
We're gonna, yeah.
Yep.
We're gonna vote on, so I want to, I want to vote, we're gonna vote now on items A through L excluding item K.
Got it.
And then we'll get on to item K. So Ms. Witaske Smith, could you please take a roll call vote on items A through L excluding item K?
Ms. Dolee.
Aye.
Dr. Grande.
Aye.
Mr. Miller.
Aye.
Ms. Walkman.
Aye.
Ms. Whitsett.
Aye.
Ms. Williams.
Aye.
Ms. Wakowski Smith, aye. Mr. Henry.
Aye.
Motion passes eight to nothing.
Thank you. Now, do I have a motion to approve item K? And then we'll discuss.
Some of.
Thank you, Mrs. Walkman. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Discussion on item K, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five EXQ Esser Grant. Ms. Dolee?
Yeah, so I I just want to, I have some clarifying questions about this and just want to understand how we arrived at the need for this program. I do realize it's funded via Esser. But is this, so this is a potential intervention for some or all of our sixth grade and ninth grade students? And so, you know, how did the need evolve? What role did our staff play in helping to identify the need and the solution? And what is their involvement ongoing and how will they be supported in delivering this program?
Hi, thank you for the question. So EXQ is a tertiary, not a universal intervention for executive functioning. So when we do a universal district-wide intervention or curriculum, that's typically by committee. When the need is tertiary or individualized, it's the administrator's job to select research-based interventions to add to a menu of interventions. So the idea is that this is for some students in first starting in the sixth grade, then moving to the ninth grade. This is based on a variety of stakeholder feedback that's from both tier two, the tier two PDIS group and special education teachers have talked about the need for executive functioning curriculum. I don't know that I would have moved forward as quickly on on this had we not had the Esser funds to spend and that we had a deadline to spend them in terms of the support for the curriculum. One of the major reasons for selecting it is it wasn't, or it was approved by when we submitted our application for Esser funds.
Yeah, and you know, so the the website mentions it as evidence-based and
Correct.
I struggled to kind of narrow down where the reference was to the evidence that was used to support the program.
Sure. So in terms of evidence-based executive functioning curriculum, I think what you'll find is the research is sparse. But what you will find that is quite robust is that what the components of the curriculum contain, they should contain nine key components. And then EXQ meets that threshold. And I believe that that's why when submitted through Esser, that it was approved through them because it meets that threshold of the nine different areas. It includes that.
Okay, so I just want to make sure I understand. So it is not for all students. It is for a select group of students that have been identified with teacher input.
Correct. That's correct. Either through special education reasons or through PDIS tier two where we're seeing a concern and then we would have this as an option. Just a menu. We have a menu of options and this is one that we'd like to include on our menu.
And how will staff be supported who are implementing the program?
Part of the, part of the cost of the contract includes professional learning. It includes includes direct instruction in how to use the curriculum, but also some booster sessions and some Q and A. So that's included in the contract. First step.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any, any further discussion on item?
Yeah, I'll I'll just add, and this is through direct personal experience, that that'll, that some of that support's already happening. You know, I I teachers have provided that support to my kids who are now unhappy with me since I said that. But 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 I I I think having that extra like toolkit that's like handy to pull from could be very, very helpful and make it just hopefully easier to be able to provide that level of support. But I know I, we've we've benefited from that, from the the staff as it is. I'm excited to see a curriculum or, well, I won't call it curriculum, but the extra, extra stuff to pull in and make it a little bit easier on everybody.
Thank you. Any further discussion on item K, the EXQ? Okay. Seeing, are you okay, Mrs. Dolee?
Yeah, I mean, I'll I'll be honest, I I, you know, we're here for kids and I I it sounds like it has the potential to be a good program for kids. I am struggling a little bit with how we got to this point. As you said, it was a bit rushed because the grant was due and what have you. But I'm reminding myself that we're here for kids, so hopefully that it'll be a good program for kids.
Okay.
Yeah, and our staff will be supported in implementing it as well.
Thank you. Any any further discussion? Nope. Okay. Mrs. Witaske Smith, could you please take a roll call vote for item K, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five EXQ Esser Grant?
Ms. Dolee.
Aye.
Dr. Grande. Mr. Miller.
Aye.
Ms. Walkman.
Aye.
Ms. Whitsett.
Aye.
Ms. Williams.
Aye.
Ms. Wakowski Smith, aye. Mr. Henry.
Aye.
Motion passes eight with eight votes.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to finance, we have fourteen items for approval in finance. Are there any items on the list that anyone on the board would like to separate from the rest? Okay. Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve items A through N under finance? Dr. Grande, thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Miller, thank you. I will read these down here and we can have a quick discussion. Funds facilities. Bills paid to vendors from July first through July thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Financial statements from July twenty twenty-four. Treasures report, July twenty twenty-four. New food services equipment. No, we needed that. Power School renewal. Naviance renewal, license and subscription renewal, SIS. Willgro Services Inc. is renewal. Rico Paper Cut is renewal. Rico Copier Lease Proposal renewal. Integro, if I'm pronouncing that correctly, Barracuda Filter renewal. I'm sure AJ will tell me I he's nodding his head yet. Sorry, AJ. Seesaw as a renewal. Screencastify renewal. And E plus firewall purchase and install Esser using an Esser grant. Any discussions on items A through N? Dr. Grande, please.
Just a quick note on the equipment for food services. It's always reminding that the food services budget is a separate part of the district budget. The food services needs to be a sufficient part of the different corporations. So Integro, there is surplus in that program invested into capital needs in our missions to protect the consumer.
Thank you for that clarification. Any other further question or discussion under finance? Mr. Miller, please.
For those who weren't able to be at the Facilities and Finance Committee meeting or see it online, one of the things that I want to point out in the contracts, the initiative of our business office to think about multi-year contracts in order to hold the cost increase steady by having three-year contracts instead of a seven-year per annum, seven percent per annum increase, we have it at five. And the beauty of that is that we can also still get out of that contract at any time. So it is a a great initiative of the business office that I want to pull forward to the community.
Thank you. Any further discussion discussion under items under finance?
Kevin.
Yes.
Could you?
Switch that, please.
For the audience, if if you have it, the the food equipment that was purchased because it was issues like last year.
You want, you want to know the actual, the specific equipment that's attached on there?
And for what school?
Yep, we can do that. I think Dr. Scanlon's pulling it up right now.
Yes, we have on the equipment list, looks like a convection gas oven is on that list. It's like two of those are being replaced. There's a lot of technical stuff, some water filtration systems in the, it looks like in the kitchen and the sink's being replaced. The heat shield, some of the equipment for heat shields, you know, for the I guess above the, you know, above the ovens. I mean, we we can send that to the board if the board wants to see the entire.
We have.
Yes.
I think, I think there's a freezer in there.
Yeah, I think a freezer.
New pitch locker for the middle school.
Excuse me. Could you come to the microphone, please? So in our yes, so people at home can also. Thank you.
Some of the new equipment that has been purchased is a new dishwasher, inline dishwasher for the middle school. The combi ovens are for the high school. An additional two milk coolers for two of the elementary schools. And I'm trying to think what the fourth piece of equipment was. But that's a majority in result purchased out of the funds from.
Yep, here, yes, yep.
Next one. Any further discussion? Any further discussion on items under finance? Okay, seeing none, Ms. Witowski-Smith, could you please take a roll call vote?
Ms. Dolee?
Aye.
Dr. Grande? Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Ms. Walkman?
Aye.
Ms. Witsett?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Ms. Witkowski-Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Henry?
Aye.
It passes with eight votes.
Thank you. All right, moving on to other, we have one motion to discuss for the Delaware County Community College Budget and Enrollment Resolution. Do I have a motion to approve that resolution?
No move.
Thank you, Mrs. Witsett. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Dolee. Discussion. Ms. Witsett, do you have any discussion on the budget?
No.
Okay. Any, any further discussion on the Delaware County Community College Budget and Enrollment Resolution? Okay, seeing none. Mrs. Witowski-Smith, would you please take a roll call vote?
Ms. Dolee?
Aye.
Dr. Grande?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Ms. Walkman?
Aye.
Ms. Witsett?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Ms. Witkowski-Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Henry?
Aye.
Motion carries with eight votes.
Okay, thank you very much. Now we're moving on to audience recognition in response to topics not on the agenda. I'll remind everybody, this is a time on the agenda where we give an opportunity for public comment for items not on the agenda. We'll have, as a reminder, public comment is a time for district residents and taxpayers to speak to the board about an issue that is before the board or may come before the board. It's a time for us to listen and hear perspectives from our community. While we can't answer questions at the meeting, there's always an opportunity for follow-up after the meeting. Again, as we said earlier, I want to, we will stick to the three-minute time limit and we'll give you a warning when there's one minute. Before I recognize members of the public, one minute, please. For items not on the agenda, the board wanted to extend, lack of a better term, olive branch, to our WSEA members here. And although the district strictly enforces the Sunshine Act restriction on speakers to residents and taxpayers of the district, we're making a one-time exception and I've asked and allowed the president of WSEA to come up and speak for a couple of minutes. So will Ms. Billy Joe Machinara, please come up.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Billy Joe Machinara and I'm the proud president of the Wallingford Swarthmore Education Association. Our members include teachers, nurses, psychologists, social workers, and guidance counselors that work with the children in our schools and support them on a daily basis. I am here this evening to speak to you, the school board, district administration, as well as the parents and residents of the district on behalf of WSEA. If you had walked through any one of our schools last week, you would have seen teachers doing what they always do this time in August. Bulletin boards were going up, folders were being labeled, lesson plans were being created, and groups of teachers were meeting to prepare for the arrival of children on the first day of school, engaging in the types of collaboration that are so beneficial to the success of our students. You would have never known that we are still bargaining a contract. If you had walked through any one of our schools yesterday, you would have witnessed the typical excitement and joy that the first day of a new school year brings. Teachers welcomed students and began the important work of building classroom communities where all students feel safe and welcome. You would have never known that we are still bargaining a contract. I believe that speaks volumes about the professionalism and dedication of our members. We continue to focus on what is most important, our students, and honoring the fact that you entrust your children to our care. I'd like to thank the parents and community members who have expressed their support. You have spoken words of care and encouragement, worn buttons, displayed lawn signs, and shown up for us in so many ways. It means a great deal to all of our members and please know how much we appreciate you. That's not to say that being without a current contract and remaining in status quo is something that our members have easily undertaken. It's been many years since our association has been without a contract at this point in the school year, and it has a definite negative impact on morale. As their president, I can tell you, these teachers and staff have been more than patient with the negotiation process. It's time to settle a fair contract for them. The WSEA negotiation team continues to be available to do the important work that is necessary in order to secure a tentative agreement. I am confident that the district will continue to bargain with us in good faith and that a tentative agreement will be reached soon. We are looking forward to this process reaching a conclusion so that we can focus solely on our most important priority, which is to continue to provide our students with a top-quality education that has become the hallmark of our district. You may have noticed that our members are wearing shirts this evening with the words reset, rebuild, restore, twenty twenty-four, twenty-five. We have adopted that as a mantra for our association as we begin this school year. Many of our members have been with the district for decades. Our experience runs deep. In fact, the four members of our negotiations team have more than seventy years combined experience in our district. We owe this to the fact that our shared history has been one of cooperation and collegial. As we have always expressed a willingness to work with the board and administration to work collaboratively on district initiatives and plans. We had always been accustomed to a relationship that fostered respect and goodwill as issues and concerns were addressed together with everyone working toward the greater good. We are ready to work with you to rebuild that positive, mutually respectful relationship. We know that the coming days, weeks, and months will involve a great deal of work, change, and healing for our community. We must all reset, rebuild, and restore. We ask, though, that as decisions are made that directly affect the future direction of the district, WSEA members and most importantly, students, we are invited to occupy a seat at the table. Our students benefit when we work together with their success in mind. WSEA is here, as we have always been, ready to partner with you, the school board, the administration, and the community. We hope to move forward together to a future which will find us better for the struggles we have faced and will overcome. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now we're going to move on to audience recognition for items not on the agenda. Just a reminder, when you come up to the podium, please state your full name and the street on which you live in our district. Please.
Wish I had made my font size bigger because I'm all teary-eyed, but thank you. Good evening. My name is Katie Finley. If my children knew that I was teary-eyed, they would be so embarrassed. I live on True Penny Road in New York. I have a seventh grader in the middle school and a fourth grader in Wallingford, at Wallingford. Back in the spring, a group of parents from West Middle School joined me at my house to talk about smartphones and other devices. Unbeknownst to us, other parents from other schools in the district were also meeting to discuss similar topics. What transpired is a parent-community group called Haven Hold the Phone. Haven Hold the Phone is a supportive and inclusive community effort within the Wallingford Swarthmore School District where families can access reliable information and engage in open discussions about the impact of electronic devices and social media on our children. The community is four hundred and seventy-six members strong. To ensure transparency and partnership with the board and school administration, we met with the prior superintendent on July sixteenth to review our mission and the data supporting our asks. It is my understanding the board has received this presentation as well. To ensure we indeed were representing the voice of the parent community, we launched a change.org petition to share our asks and gain further support. This petition has over three hundred and sixty-nine signatures as of today. I am here on behalf of so many other parents and guardians in our community to show up as partners and collaborators with you. We recognize the district has taken a more proactive approach in verbalizing the current device policy this school year. However, this puts enormous burden on our teachers to police and enforce what is a known addictive technology instead of educating those three thousand seven hundred and thirty-six students.
One minute left.
We are eager to work with you in the policy committee to revisit and rewrite the device policy. The time is now. The effort changes showing up across the country, within our very own state and vocally within school districts. Our district can and should be in a leadership position in this change effort. And we, the parent community, are here to support you in this change initiative. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sandy Gatch. I'm on Pine Ridge Road and I have a sixth grader and a third grader at SRS. When Haven Hold the Phone was formed, it was due to the growing number of articles and publications with both scientific and anecdotal data indicating the concerning effects of phones and other electronic devices on children in school. We wanted to know what the problem was like in our own school community from those who would know best, our teachers. We sent out an anonymous survey and received an overwhelming response, almost fifty replies in just the first few days. Over ninety percent of responses were from Strat Haven High School teachers, not surprisingly unsure. Of the teachers who responded, ninety-six percent expressed a necessity for prohibiting electronic devices in school. Nearly all of them left substantial comments painting a shocking picture. Their experiences and perspective should make us think twice about what we are giving up in exchange for the convenience of being able to communicate with our children during the school day. Here are some of the comments from our teachers. Parents need to know that even though it's called a phone, the students rarely use it as a phone for calls or texts. They use it as a mirror. They watch videos, social media posts, distractions, movies, music. Texts coming in from outside sources made it difficult to properly manage the students in an emergency situation. And I want to repeat that because everyone always says, my kid needs their phone in an emergency. Teachers said it made it difficult to manage an emergency. Phone use at the high school is rampant and currently there is no enforceable rule. There are no consequences if a student has their phone out. I've watched it spiral out of control, impacting learning, focus, mental health, privacy, social skills, and the school environment. It's like climbing Everest to hold their attention, even when content and curricula are thoughtful, engaging, and well-designed. Phones in the classroom are deteriorating students' natural curiosity about deeper ideas and meanings. There's nothing more important for the health of our students and the future of schooling than banning smartphones from our public schools. This is the most pressing and actionable problem presently in our schools. It is the single most disruptive force in education. To ignore it is shameful. I usually have to ask at least ten students a day to please take their earbuds out. The constant redirection regarding cell phones and earbuds takes a lot of time away from actual instruction and is exhausting for me. Ban the phones, please. And it goes on like this. The survey shows a clear and consistent message from our teachers. Enough is enough. The time is now. Enforcement of rules around electronic devices should not be left up to the teachers. Let our teachers teach. Thank you.
Members of the board, good evening. My name is Tanner Rouse. I'm on Columbia Avenue and I'm a second grader here. And I realize tonight that I don't know any person and I'm a little bit embarrassed about that. I want to start by thanking, I truly love living in this community. A big part of that is that we are surrounded by people that see a problem and they take action. They rise to meet the challenges of what's around them in their community to make their community better. You all did that. Our school district had a problem. And I think just about everyone in this room is more qualified to speak on that than I am. But suffice to say, a problem arose and you all took action to make our district better for our children and for the people that work here. And so in a very difficult and very public process, I'm sure that wasn't easy. And I want to say thank you for doing so swiftly and for bringing us to this point here tonight with Dr. Scanlon, Dr. Baddick. I want to urge you, though, to continue in that vein, to lead, to make difficult decisions and to take action. It strikes me as a very common sense reality that having cell phones in schools is a bad environment for our kids to learn. Children, children are not equipped to handle the distraction during school day that a phone is going to provide. I know that because most adults are not equipped to handle that distraction. I have the Phillies game on in my pocket right now.
Do you know the score?
They were up four-nine.
Sorry, say it.
Asking, asking our, our children put the phones away and off throughout the school day strikes me as a very obvious improvement to the educational environment we are going to create for them. I recognize that it's going to come with some difficulties. It's going to require the school district to create alternative means by which they can communicate if they need to. It is going to require the school district to create a policy so that our teachers are not ad hoc wrangling that distraction all day and can focus instead, once again, on creating the best educational environment for our children that they can.
One minute.
It is not, I'm not so naive to think that that is going to be simple. It is going to be somewhat complicated. But that's why we have you. This is a pivot point for the district this summer. Regardless of this issue, but that is what it is. I very much hope that it is one that takes us from being an excellent district to being the absolute gold standard. In order to do that, though, it will require true leadership on issues like this, to be bold, to push, to make our district, to make this environment the best it can be for our children. Dr. Scanlon, Dr. Baddick, members of the board, I want to assure you, you have a community, you have faculty, you have support. We will rise to meet you when you lead on these issues. We will rise to meet you when you push to make our school system the absolute best it can be. But we can only do that with your leadership. And so that's what I'm asking for tonight. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jeff Havlin, three-eleven Baxter Avenue in Swarthmore. I'm going to read quickly because I only have three minutes. I've been a resident of Swarthmore for forty-two years. I was one of six former counselors who recently wrote a letter to the Swarthmorean and a longer letter to you guys that you never got a response from because we only had seven hundred words in the Swarthmorean. I was a counselor at Swarthmore High School, Strat Haven High School, and for Briefstand, Strat Haven Middle School. I was one of two teachers to serve on both three-year reorganization committee to merge the district high schools and the ten years and then 10 years later to reorganize Strat Haven High School. I was the first activities coordinator, coach, founder of the service club, sponsor of the International Bowl, as also part of the ABC board that expanded the girls' house and then to a coed house. All of this is to say, I was and continue to be invested in the community and the changes that are inherent in 42 years. The school board position is a thankless job. You know, you're having any fun, you know, you think, you think you guys have been like a standing ovation. It's, 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 but you took the job, you chose to undertake. You'll excuse me if I'm hesitant to trust that this group will make a better decision than you have for the last two superintendents. Your predecessor's choice chose a person with no classroom experience over Mary Jo Yanico, the most competent... The most competent administrator I've experienced in my 38 years in public education. They chose someone with a financial background, probably because they were wasting money like you guys have been, instead of a woman who had been an English teacher, a union head, a coach, an assistant principal, and a principal very successful at Strat Haven High School. If you ask any current faculty member of that time, they would say the biggest blunder in our district's history and changed the trajectory of our district was not hiring Mary Jo Yanico.
One minute.
At one, at one time, we were consistently ranked sixth or seventh amongst, most of my career, we were always fifth, sixth in all of the state. You know what our rank is now? Thirty-fourth, thirty-fourth. How'd that happen, guys? And it's partly on your watch. The follow-up act was to hire a man who was so divisive that he alienated both administrators and faculty alike. Anyone on the search committee to do was call Sheltonham Contract, a guy called somebody on Westchester to find out that Scanlon's a great guy. You hired a principal who tried to make the high school over into Garnet Valley's image, and superintendent who tried to make it over to Lower Marion's image. Both are fine districts, but that's not who we are. My easiest analogy would be to call for Kevin Clancy and Jim Connor to resign as football coaches because they had the tried and true T-wing formation they have embraced for 35 years in partnership is not used by many high schools and is thought to be boring, not enough excitement. All they've done is win 85% of the games, go on to four state championships, and 13 district championships. More than that, they have taken, they have a 35-year collaboration with our marching band, taking off their helmets at the end of every game. That's collaboration. We need a superintendent who listens and collaborates with our faculty about the strengths of our district, knows the history of our district, builds upon that history. We don't need someone who is trying to implement change just for the sake of change. We also need to rid ourselves of administrators who's authoritarian, authoritarian style leads to numerous resignations. I'll speak more about that at another board meeting.
Mr. Havlin, you're out of time.
I need 12 seconds. We spent $750,000 on administrative states. 750, you can't pay these teachers? I mean, anybody who knows education knows a backbone of your district is your teachers in the classes. If we don't respect them, if Jeff doesn't help them, instead of confusing them, we're going to continue to fall in the rankings, and it breaks my heart. Thank you.
Guys, Erin Verso, 202 Fairfield. Just backing up what he said, not that he needs any backup. My mother was a teacher and a guidance counselor for 25 years, and one person cannot write all of those senior letters of recommendation. It's not possible. Because I watched her do as many as she could, and we only had a class of 350 seniors, and it was, she didn't sleep. Okay, and she had someone else doing half of those kids. All right, today, though, I would like to talk to you about the high school schedule, specifically the fifth block. As I understand the history, and this is a rough summarization, so don't shoot me here. The way the fifth block functions now was originally the brainchild of Henry Pearlberg and the late Jack Potts. When they were hired in the district, we only had a handful of band students. And they wanted to create a band where students could do band and sports, orchestra and sports, that they could do everything that they wanted to for their high school experience. And they worked with the coaches to collaborate on making this happen, and then they went door to door in our community to recruit students to play for the bands. When they started, they had a handful. Now there's 300, and that's low for us on a usual year. Okay, 300 kids do marching band alone, that's the band in the band front. That does not include orchestra, symphonic orchestra, camaraderie, cantata, sax quartet. Did I miss any? Well, several times in the morning, I'm talking just fifth block classes. What?
Janetman.
That's, oh, is Janetman fifth block? I thought it was evening. Some of it's fifth block. Okay, so you get the point. There are a lot of musical things happening in fifth block. But fifth block is also all the clubs for the school.
One minute left.
It's the time where they meet with teachers, when they need help and to make up exams. And it's also when the athletes leave school early so that they can get to sporting events. Now, if you push fifth block to the middle of the school day and move an academic class to that time period, do you know what happens? On Monday, the tennis team misses school, the last hour of their academic class. On Tuesday, it's the cross-country boys and girls teams. On Wednesday, it's lacrosse. You get my point. So on Fridays, every other Friday, it's going to be the entire marching band plus the football team, plus the cheerleaders, missing class, plus teachers who are coaches for all of these things. So trying to make up the missed academic classes by moving the fifth block to the middle of the day would be an absolute scheduling nightmare. Not to mention that that would mean taking away 10 minutes of lunchtime. The CDC said...
Out of time.
Okay, sorry, 30 seconds, maybe? Okay. The CDC said that kids K through 12 need recess time, that it increases their level of physical activity, improves their memory, attention, and concentration, helps them stay on task in class, reduces disruptive behavior, and improves their social and emotional development. 10 minutes does not seem like a lot of time to you, but my son played football with his friends for 10 minutes at the end of lunch every day his freshman year of high school. Do you know what the highlight of his day was? That 10 minutes. These teachers love and know our kids, and they know that this is not a good plan, and maybe why the contract negotiations are snapped. So how about we listen to the teachers because they know what's going? Thank you.
I'm John Roman, 3 Sharpless Lane, and I'm back, but I'm going to bury him, not the show Obama, and I can't speak like the last two. Okay, so here's where I'm going to start. I'm just going to segue tonight to talk about, my kids have graduated. Okay, I counsel 5,200 kids on public policy. Not on getting into college. I'm an AP member, I'm a college board member. I'm going to get to the AP thing in a second, but one thing I need to say very clearly is with the likes of Awolman Moralia, Layman Torabosa, these guys shepherded the kids. My wife is a teacher. Guess what? The state of Pennsylvania with the extra money given to her district, retention bonus, and another bonus. You guys are screwing the pooch. This group works with you guys. And they should be empowered. Instead, you guys spent money from the state on a previous superintendent. Now, I think the new superintendent, assistant superintendent, superintendent are going to do wonderful things, but I have no confidence as a school board. Okay, and you guys can be removed, and I figured it out, because let me talk to you about AP for a second. I did lay a claim. You guys have taxed your smartest kids for $300,000 for 10 years. $30,000 was given back to your school district by the college board. Fee for service, nice conventions. Where did the money go? Probably to the superintendent you fired and said was proficient, not to the teachers, where it should go. Let's talk more about it. I have parents from this district, because I've worked with over 1,000 Strat Haven students. I have one parent who spent over $3,000 on your AP rule. Okay, and your AP rule alone, the kid got five from most APs, didn't cash them in for college, retook the class.
You have one left.
It's a parent decision. I'll tell you the two other problems. Because of your school policies, kids have been threatened who didn't sign up for AP with not going to their prom and for not having graduation tickets. I have some of these kids. They had 504s and IEPs, depression, anxiety. Yet you patented, basically, a way for them to be retaliated, which breaks their 504, which is actually a civil rights issue, an empowerment issue for a lawsuit, all because you require AP. So why I'm simply asking is suspended for the year if you guys need a presentation in the pro-econ, or more importantly, you win AP, you pay for it. $98 a kid, you'll get the $9 still back as a rebate to the school district. But we're like AP horse here.
You're out of time.
Okay, so I will be back again. Thank you.
Chris Santa Maria, Henry Lane. Okay, I was here on the 22nd of July, I was here last Thursday. Last Thursday, I spoke, directed my comments to the parents on the 22nd. I think most of my comments are directed to the school board. But I want to start by thanking Mr. Henry and the school board for giving the WSCA a chance to speak tonight. I think it was very important for them to be heard. I think, Mary Jo, you're doing a terrific job there, great speech. Look, I, I'm going to talk to the WSCA members tonight and address that as someone who's knows all too well what you're going through right now. I went through it twice at Lower Marion. And what I told my members at this point in the process, and I know you've been sitting there long into this meeting, you're tired, you've been in the classroom for two days, you're, you've got lessons to prepare, you've got kids you're going to see tomorrow, and you're giving it your all. Hang in there, give it your all. Hopefully this won't go on much longer. I know it's testing your patience terribly. I know you feel the gut punch in your stomach, thinking that the board is not listening to you and not honoring your service. And it's hard not to feel that way so far, but I think, Mary Jo and your leadership are going to land, land this plane. I think the school board has gotten a message tonight that they need to land this plane, and we need to get on with a great school year. I think the students deserve it, and I hope the parents understand the urgency of this, and we'll keep asking about when this is going to happen, and I just want to give you a little shout out in the pep talk. So, well done, everybody.
Hello, my name is Deirdre Abrahamson. I live in Hickory, Lane, and Wallingford. Thank you, I miss you. I have a lot of things that I could talk about, but one thing I'm going to talk about tonight that is something that is near and dear to my heart is the Strat Haven Ultimate Grisby Program. We started it 10, I started it 10 years ago with my husband at Strat Haven. Mary Jo Yanico was very nice to let us put up a sign to hold an interest meeting, and we had about 12 kids come out, and that, that team set the foundation for what has evolved over the past 10 years. We regularly have 60 to 80 kids on three teams. I remember with that group, going to our first couple of tournaments, losing all our games, but having a wonderful time. And I remember when we won our first ever game, and we were playing teams from Lower Marion, Havering, Radnor teams that have, they've had programs since the early 2000s. So we were a new kid on the block, but we quickly established ourselves as one of the best teams in this state and in the nation. We've gone to have many of our kids play at the college level, several qualifying for national championships. One got second at college nationals. One, my son, competed at the European Championships. And some of the coaches and players are going to talk a little bit more about some of the accomplishments the girls' team had this season. But I want to give a shout out to the boys' team. This past year, they got fourth at the state championships, but they also won the Spirit of the Game Award in the state of Pennsylvania. We had nine boys compete at the youth club championships this summer in Denver, Colorado. And one of our boys, Colin Jarvis, won the national championship with Philadelphia, they call Philadelphia Septa. It's just been amazing to be part of this program and to be a part of these kids' lives and watch them grow up, have a Strat Haven Ultimate Community, be part of the Philadelphia area
One minute left.
high school community, and now on a national level. Just really proud. We've had phenomenal coaches that have played at national and world levels. One of the ones I want to shout out is Lisa Lindsay Markey, who was player. She won the Player of the Year for the whole country when she was at Swarthmore, and she's one of our volunteer coaches. Lisa here, behind me, has played at numerous national world championships, as well as myself. And we dedicate and volunteer countless hours to have this program for our kids. So anyway, I just wanted to, I know with the Higgin, they've won the boys' championships in the past couple of years, and the board has invited them to be recognized at the board meetings. And I just want to make sure moving forward, the board continues to do stuff like that for all of our athletes, artists, musicians, when there's accomplishments, and recognize them at the board meeting. And I just want to celebrate 10 years, and can't wait for the next decade and continue to see what transpires and what we continue to achieve. And I just wanted to share that with the board, so you're aware that this has been happening, and I have a disc for each of you tonight. Thank you for letting me.
Hello, everyone. My name is Lisa Meden. I live at 12 Shepherd's Lane. I have a Strat Haven alum, who was class of 2022, Hope Hernandez. And I am the co-coach of the Strat Haven Ultimate Girls Team. And this was a year of first for us, as Deirdre mentioned. We went for many years with rarely winning games, but this year we won our first tournament. It's going to be Radnor's invite. As Deirdre mentioned, Radnor is one of the premier Ultimate teams, has been around for over 20 years. So I would like us to someday have a trophy case where we can start putting our trophies in. We have no place to really put them right now. This was also the first time that we ever won the state championship. This one doesn't look as impressive, but it's shaped like a disc. We actually beat Springfield in the finals by one point, and many of the girls on the Springfield team had actually started with us because Springfield didn't have a team five years ago. So they played with us, and then were able to form their own team. Another first is that we got our first invitation to the national championship of high schools. It was held in Rockford, Illinois. We had to raise about $20,000 to go. And it was also the weekend of high school graduation, so many of our players weren't able to join us for various reasons. So we had a very small squad of 14. We ended up 12th in the nation, which was a good first start, very exciting. The other really big first is that one of our players, Katie Stack, tried out and made the USA national team for mixed. So it's a mix of boys and girls. They went to the world championships and they won the world championship. I want to encourage everyone to tell their kids about Ultimate. We do not turn anyone away. If you're interested, if your kids are interested in playing Ultimate, send them out. We would love to have them join us.
One minute.
We often have middle schoolers join us as well. So it's a very welcoming, open environment, and we'd love to have more people come try out. Thank you.
Hello, good evening. My name is...
Hello, good evening. My name is Tina Wong, and I live on Creekside Road in Wallingford, and I am a senior at our high school. I'm here tonight to highlight and celebrate the achievements of Strathaven Ultimate, Strathaven's Ultimate Frisbee Program, and specifically Shug X or Strathaven's Girls and Non-Binary Ultimate Frisbee Teams' success in the past year. This will be my sixth year participating in Strathaven's Ultimate Frisbee Community, my fourth year on Shug X, and my third year serving as my team's spirit captain. I first began learning about Ultimate Frisbee through my older sister, who has just recently graduated college. She was Strathaven's class of twenty twenty. Prior to the COVID pandemic, I participated in the middle school's Ultimate Frisbee Club in seventh grade, but really began participating in the Strathaven Ultimate Community in my freshman year of high school. Since my freshman year, Shug X has grown and developed considerably. I remember the amazement of my teammates when we achieved second in the state two years ago, but last year, or in May of this year, uh, Shug X had surpassed all of our hopes and wishes when we won the first place at the regional tournament, won the state championship, and were not only invited to nationals, but also placed top in the country. I am incredibly proud to be part of this team and program, and I'm grateful for our amazing coaches, Lisa Meden and Billy Hodges. I'm looking forward to my final season on the team and can't wait to see what we can accomplish. Thank you for listening and for the district and community's support.
My name is the home and the, I live in Rose Valley, Wallingford. And I'm here, I just want to say how few about this school right now. Eleven years ago, our family moved in this Wallingford because of the reputation of the school district. I have two kids. Uh, I want him to have the best education I can, I can give me today. That's why I live here. Few years ago, my, uh, my old, older child was living Strathaven High School, and the, I think he got a support we want, we need from the school and from administration. And the one, uh, when we have like a problem or some issue and the school help us to address the issue, give us a solution or option. And, uh, right now, my son, my older son, uh, is a aerospace engineer now. Right now, my youngest son is in Strathaven High School, but last year we have so, so many problems from school. And about a schedule, some issue. And I reached out to the school and the same the, I got a kind of answer, but the answer let me know, let me feel, so we didn't got a support we, we should have. My son here, so lost weight, our family feel so sorry to tell. So I say, I just hope in the, uh, new school year, the new administrative team, so you can do something to provide the, the support students need. Hopefully, everything will be okay now, but I still feel sorry about last year, had on my, on my son. I hope next year will be okay. Thank you.
Um, hi, I'm Georgette, uh, cause they in Jamaro. I live on Bowers Lane. I have four kids that are in the district. Um, a twenty-one, twenty-one-year-old who graduated, and I have three. I have a, um, six-year-old that's at West. She's in this, uh, autistic support group, and then I have, um, a six-year-old, I mean, I'm sorry, uh, um, one in sixth grade. So I've been having issues with the bus transportation. Um, so it's my sixth, my sixth grader who, um, just started, there's seventy-two kids on a bus. They all have, most of them are sitting on the floor. Um, is there something, I, I don't, I called the transportation department. Um, I reached out to the principal. And I've just been having a lot of issues with the transportation department, with my special autistic daughter also. Um, I, it's the bus drivers, um, yelling at the kids, making accusations. It's just really upsetting. Um, he's, he's just starting sixth grade. He's in the middle school, so he's upset about that. I just thought I'd, uh, let you guys know. I've reached out multiple times and haven't heard back. But it's upsetting. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else, uh, for public comment on items not on the agenda? Please.
Guys, hi, everyone. I am not a public speaker. This is gonna be really awkward. I'm gonna get real red. My name is Melissa List. I live at, uh, Turner Road. I have three kids in the district. My son Joe is on the spectrum. He is, um, a fifth grader at West. Dr. Sandberg, you and I spoke on the phone the first day of extended school year. Um, I failed to mention, the main reason I'm here is to support these people over here. Thank you guys so much for all the support you have here for us. Um, with that said, besides not having a contract, and I don't know any better way to put this, it really jacked up my kid's summer. Extended school year, and I apologize for any of the teachers that were there for it, was a bit of a nightmare. Um, my son went for three days and we had no other programming for him. You know, we never used extended school year, Kevin, just, I, I want, you did respond to my email, which I appreciated, but one of the things that Dr. Sandberg had mentioned in the email was a lot of people use it like as a babysitter. Uh, we can afford a babysitter, we can afford to send my kid to camps. Um, you know, we could have gone to the beach for a month as a family. My other two children had other things to do, and Joe, or excuse me, my son, has been to extended school year for years. Um, field trips every week, community outings, as they call them, lots of fun activities happening in the building. This year, zero community outings, zero. A little bit of transparency would have gone such a long way. It really would have, and I have to think, I just have to speculate that the reason why extended school year, I, I feel that things got cut from it, was because our teachers don't have a contract, and most of them were, you know, kind of told, hey, maybe since you don't have a contract, you should find other things to do this summer. So I think that there were resources that were clearly missing, and it was just really disappointing as, as parents of this district. It would have been really, really appreciated if, if you had been more forthright and forthcoming with, uh, that information and had let us know that the program was going to so drastically change. Um, that's all. Thank you. Things fall down, so just keep that in mind. Get these guys a contract. Thank you.
Hi, me again. Uh, Mandy Ubeli, Cameron Jive, Wallingford. Um, so I'm up here again, uh, because I'm really grateful for the discussions that are being had tonight, um, particularly around, um, the agenda, um, pieces that were already voted on. It's refreshing. It's been a really long time since we've actually had discussions with the, the school board, so, uh, thank you for that. Uh, and I'm back up here because, uh, frankly, I'm tired of misinformation being, uh, given to community members. Um, and school board members, um, regarding, uh, literacy instruction that's aligned to the science of reading. Um, regarding the comments that were made, um, so I just actually scribbled this down, so I don't know how long this is gonna go, I'm sorry. Um, or how coherent it will be, but I'm gonna try. Um, just regarding the comments that were made in response to the things that I mentioned earlier, uh, regarding the science of reading, actually, PDE has a great free course for leaders. Uh, and so my question is, have any of our district leaders or, uh, school board members participated in that or any other science of reading, training, or instruction? Also, it sounds like from Mrs. Walkman's comments that the onus of shifting from balanced literacy approach to science, uh, excuse me, to structured literacy, um, that most of that onus is being put on teachers. Uh, additionally, Mrs. Walkman, uh, you mentioned that, uh, you had reached out to nearby districts. Um, and that they were in support of the programs that were on the agenda for this evening, which is wonderful. Um, that you're doing your due diligence. Uh, I hope other school board members are doing that as well. Um, but my question is regarding that is, are, are those school districts? Um, have, how long have they been implementing a structured literacy approach? Is, what's their data of those school districts, right? Is, was it just a question that you asked? How is this program? Great, okay, wonderful, thanks. We're gonna adopt it. Uh, that's what it sounded like from your comments. I hope that that's not how those conversations went. Um, couple months ago, I spoke to this exact school board, uh, and so I might sound like a broken record to them, but I'm gonna say it again to, um, Dr. Mosakowski's point about tier one instruction. Uh, and I just looked this up very quickly. You can do a quick search. Uh, one of the leading experts, Dr. Stephanie Stoller, on, uh, structured literacy. Tier one instruction should be done also in small group instruction. It sounds like with ninety-five percent group and Sunday that because ninety-five percent group is going to be used as a core phonics program, and Sunday is going to be used as an intervention. Sounds like there is no, what's the differentiation for tier one instruction?
Time.
Is that onus going to be put on the teachers again? Are they going to have to reinvent the wheel? Is the instruction going to be equitable for all of our children? Are all of our kids going to get structured literacy-aligned reading instruction? It doesn't sound like it from what was voted on this evening. Please ask the questions of our school board. Thank you for your time. And please empower these amazing educators with a respectable contract.
Is there anybody else? Is there anybody else who'd like to comment on items not on the agenda? Okay, thank you. Moving on to, uh, old business. Is there any old business? Seeing none. Is there any new business? Seeing none. Before we adjourn, I just wanted to give, uh, the public watching and the public here a quick update on our superintendent search. Uh, Mary Jo Witowski Smith, who's down there, has, uh, volunteered to lead the search process, uh, with the support of our full board. Uh, the first step will be writing a, a search process document and interviewing search firms, uh, and she'll have a more, a much more robust plan for us to talk about, uh, on the meeting in September, but I just want to let everybody know Mary Jo is gonna lead the search process for us. And finally, before adjourning, and I know everyone's anxious to get out of here, I just wanted to give a special thanks to everyone who worked so hard. Many of them are in this room, uh, over the summer, over the past few weeks, to get our schools ready to open yesterday. Uh, I stopped by, I saw, uh, Dr. Scanlon, and, and everyone was happy, and it was fun to see everybody back. So I wanted to make sure I thank the administration, the faculty, uh, the teachers, the principals, the volunteers, the parents, the transportation staff, the food service staff, faculty staff, sorry, the facility staff is what I meant to say, uh, even the crossing guards and our local police, and I hope I didn't forget anybody. I spent a lot of time, because I know if I forget someone, I'm gonna get a nasty email, so if I forgot someone in that group, I apologize. I just wanted to thank all those hundreds and hundreds of people that get, get work to get the school ready to go. The schools looked great yesterday. Uh, I love seeing all the, uh, the students out there running around. The weather was beautiful. I was excited to see everybody there. New year, new beginning, and that was very exciting. So I just want to thank everybody for their work. And with that, this meeting.
And I, I just want to say, I saw a great group of kids running as fast as they could to get to school, and I saw that this morning, so that made my heart sing, because they had a great first day, and they wanted to get back.
And Kevin, don't forget the janitorial staff that spends the summer.
No, I, I did, I meant to include them within the, with the facility staff. Yes, the janitorial staff, sir. I was, I was, it was a broad.